Anybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Council Member Scott Morgan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for that, Councilman Morgan. Believe it or not, today we do not have any special recognitions or tributes, so we're going to jump right into it. Welcome to the 2025th Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting, and minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to take place on Monday, October 26th, in the fall season, right? There we go. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Donovan?
Here.
Vice President Tashnik?
Here.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Here.
Councilmember Scheel?
Here.
President McCullough?
Here. And we have all members of council here, and I take it back, it is already fall. So this is the first fall.
Today.
All right. Get that pumpkin spice going, guys. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting of the City Council that was held on September 8th, 2025. Council?
So moved. Support.
Good there, Carter. Perfect. Any comments from the audience? Yes. Oh, sorry.
Sorry. I just have a couple corrections to the minutes.
The floor is yours.
Please. The first correction is Dave Varga's name is spelled incorrectly. It's spelled V-A-R-G-E instead of V-A-R-G-A. And the second correction is towards the end of the minutes, item number eight, it says Councilmember Scheel gave the first reading when it should have been Councilmember Tashnik who gave the first reading.
Perfect. I think the second one's good, but I think Dave changed his name to an E just to kind of give him a little bit of a different flavor. No, I'm kidding. So are we good with that? Awesome. With that, do we need, is that good with the motion makers?
It is.
Perfect. Any questions, concerns from the audience on the minutes? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the minutes carry. I'm jumping right into audience communication. Council set aside 30 minutes for items that are not presently on the agenda. If you'd like to make your way to either podium, you have three minutes if you could give your name and address, and you can take off. Good evening. Good to see you. The floor is yours.
My name's Deborah Guerrero. I was here on June 16th addressing you with our concerns about ordinances in our neighborhood. So, three months later, we're here for a progress report, and just to let you know, we really have not seen much progress. The information was forwarded to the ordinance department. They have addressed some of the weeds and the lawn grasses, but I still feel like I live in a junk storage yard. Vehicles are still there, dilapidated vehicles. They did address it, but said the resident was told to move it, but whatever. Why not a time deadline? I don't understand that. Also, recreational vehicles that are parked in backyards, that they don't check the registration and the title. The ordinance says it's supposed to be titled and currently registered. Why is that not being checked? And I'm not talking about things that are used. I'm talking about things that are just stored and never used. So, again, we're asking that a priority for the council and for the city be, please review the ordinances. They are not current. The inspection officers tell us they're difficult to enforce, and so we just are left with the same situation as we had earlier on. One situation, multiple vehicles parked in a side along a house, not in a driveway, potentially leaking oil and gas onto the grass right next to the next house. They were told by inspection that they could have one vehicle. I don't understand that because the ordinance says no vehicles unless on a driveway or an approved side area. So, now multiple vehicles are showing up again. And the other thing to mention is that I noticed in our neighborhood, there was a property sold in June for $185,000. This was a very neglected property. It was not something that we had mentioned to you all, but the issue is that sold for so much less than the property values, which are like 300 to 390,000 in our neighborhood. So it's a very big concern for us as property owners. So again, just hoping that you will make this a priority, it stays on your radar, and we keep having attention. I know that Mr. McCullough, Tasnik, I'm sorry if I say your name incorrectly, Bozinski, Ms. Bozinski, are in support of funding for the ordinance office, but we also need those ordinances updated. So, that's what we wanted to ask.
Thank you very much. And we have Council Communications following this, and I'm sure some of us will address and give you some updates with what we have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
Maureen Chandler, Dover Harbor, neighbor Deborah. Just kind of reiterate what she says. I walk the neighborhood a lot more than she does. She, you know, she does a lot. Same thing. I talk to ordinance officers, and basically they told me their hands are tied because our ordinance are so outdated. Like, people parking on the grass in between the houses, and they told them they could put one car there? No, no cars. It's not a driveway. It's grass in between two houses. If they let them do that, we're going to have people parking on the front yard. So, our ordinance officers, basically their hands are tied. Because our ordinance are so outdated, nowadays, people have more money, they buy more toys. They get bored with them, they put them in their backyard, they store them in their driveway, and they sit till they get the next toy. Then we end up with campers, jet skis, boats, sitting in yards. Our sub is one of the most desirable subs in the city of Livonia, and we would like to keep it that way. So, we ask, please, if you could please update the ordinances, let them be a little bit more firm with their jobs, so they have a little bit more authority to tell these people. Give them time limits. If not, the city needs more money, give them tickets. Give them a fine if they get 30 days. If you don't do what you're told, start fining them, and then maybe they would start doing what they're told. That's all we ask is to update that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, Raymond Kirchner. I live on Perry Court in Livonia. I've got two quick points. First, looking back, we just voted down a millage. Part of that was replacing this beautiful building. And I just, if you're thinking of resurrecting that, I would ask you to reconsider. First of all, I need to give us some metrics that show you moved the engineering department out, and you still don't have enough room for people. This is a very striking building. You put it on those TVs when I walked in. It's unique. And I used to live on Alpine over here where the architect lived, designed it back in the 70s. But I've got a public safety issue, and it has to do with Bush Market on Sixth Mile at Hagerty. The parking lot is a trip hazard. It's probably 24 to 30 parking places between Bush Market and the Big Boy. Cars have been parking there year after year. It's the most popular entrance, so car drives in, drives out, another one pulls in. Every place that the four wheels are on, especially the front, the heavy engine, makes a depression, makes a bowl, and those fill up with water. I've got a couple pictures here you could pass along, maybe just look at. The problem there is, it's a trip hazard for everybody, but on Tuesdays is Senior Discount Day, 10% off in case anybody wants to know. So you're walking across those parking places, and you can't see that the terrain is like this. In the wintertime, and this has been here for years, those bowls fill up with water and they freeze, and then you get snow on top of it, and you can't tell whether you're hitting an icy spot or not. So, that's something that the engineering department needs to file a complaint or something. The management said that the landlord will not fix it. You can tell me whether this is true or not, but it said that the landlord is either a present or past city council person. I don't have a name. Would anybody have some information on that? It needs to be fixed. It's really a serious hazard. I'm surprised somebody hasn't fallen and broken a wrist or something like that, so I appreciate if engineering can go out and look at it. You can drive out there today, it's raining, and you can see all the little puddles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Steve King, Coventry Gardens. I want to, was going to talk about, I'm going to piggyback on what he just said. You can drive all through the city, and the landlords have completely neglected parking lots. There's giant potholes, there's grates that are sinking. I mean, it's terrible. And it ties into zoning and ordinance, and that's something that really needs to be addressed. But I'm here today because I want to talk about what happened at the last meeting. A resident got up and quoted Michigan law about free speech. Applause equals free speech. The Supreme Court has made it clear that expression, whether spoken or symbolic, like clapping, is protected under the First Amendment. Clapping is not just noise. It is a way citizens register agreement, support, or solidarity with a speaker. City council claims applause disrupts business, but during audience communication, the council isn't voting, legislating, or conducting official business. The only purpose of that segment is for citizens to speak. Applause is part of that civic conversation. If applause were really disruptive, council members would stop applauding each other, congratulating awards, or recognizing officials. You implore us to clap for business owners. You actually tell us to clap. That's never treated as disruptive. Singling out citizens' applause is a selective restriction on speech. If applause were really disruptive, when officials try to suppress applause, it sends a message that they want silence, not engagement. Citizens don't work for council. Council works for citizens. Public meetings should be welcome, not muzzled. I urge you to remember, the Constitution does not take a recess during audience communication. Suppressing applause not only violates the First Amendment, it risks wasting taxpayer dollars on lawsuits the city cannot win. Let the people speak, and yes, let them clap.
Good evening.
Laura Janikah, Amongst Street. I just want to remind you of something that came up a little over a month ago. This is from the agenda, and it said, "A word of bid, the Department of Parks and Recreation regarding Rotary Park Pavilion Reconstruction from budgeted funds." Now, that seems to me that the funds were there that day, about a month ago. Am I right? You're not, okay. So...
Well, then I guess...
Okay, so...
I was given, it is on the agenda. At that time, I would require, and your time is paused right now. At that time, bring those comments forth again.
Okay.
I'm just following the rules. If you, no, Laura, if you have more, you can speak to it, but specifically on that item, it is technically on the agenda, which means that report out, I will open it back up to council community, or audience communication for you to speak.
Okay.
But if you have something else, this is yours.
That's number seven.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Denise Micah, Livonia, or the great state of Michigan, either way. All right. I love that part. Anyway, I just want to go over a little bit what I talked about last council meeting, about the election that's coming up, November 5th, how important it is to vote for the candidates that were against the millage. A lot of people have said that the, it was just a one-issue ballot, and it's not. It's because of the millage, it brought to light the misuse of funds, the disregard for Livonia citizens, and we need four independent-thinking vote no candidates. And we're having a four, we're having a meeting, a meet and greet, this Wednesday, the 24th, at 6:30, at Madonna University Welcome Center, and we want you to get to know the four no candidates. And those would be Steve King, Patrick Brockway, Eileen McDowell, and James Hooper. It's an opportunity to meet with them, and they had the courage to publicly state that they were against the proposal and were instrumental in getting the information out to the public. So I'd like you to meet these fresh new faces that we'd love to see on City Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Hefty, and I am a resident of the Rosedale Gardens neighborhood. I have a visual aide with me today. I have very deep pockets, so excuse me. All right, visual aide. In my left hand is a playing card. I don't do tricks, I'm just saying. Just letting you know. In my left hand is a playing card, okay? My right hand is what is called an icosahedron, or if you play D and D, it's called a d20, 20-sided die. Now, I bring these to you because we can probably agree, this has two faces, right? Yeah, two-sided? This is 20-sided. Our problems, municipally, you know, culturally, personally, less look like this and more look like this. But, I have a really, really big media diet, so I listen to so much media, and they're going to have you believe that most issues are like this. That it's left or right, yes or no, you know, good or bad, you know, and somebody's always the bad guy, right? Somebody's always evil. I challenge you to instead think about problems like this. There are 20 sides, which means there are 20 parts to this story. And I'm inviting you to get curious with me and ask what the 20 sides of the story are in Livonia. Because starting on October 1st through October 31st, I will be running a community survey through my consulting firm, Hefty Consulting, and we are going to ask 10 to 15 questions of our community. And anybody can submit questions that they're interested in knowing. You know, we're going to come up with, like I said, 10 to 15 questions and submit it to the community. I'm not anybody who has any political power, which is perfect for this moment, because I can show everybody the results, and, you know, you can do with them what you want. And I'm doing it for free. So, I invite you to participate. I'll have my email address and some cards out so that you can submit a question, and then hopefully participate October 1st. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Cindy Fleming, Woodring, in Livonia. I'm going to piggyback back on a little bit of what Ms. Hefty said. Most issues have multifaceted points of view, and I'm going to ask, humbly ask, all of you as City Council members who run committee meetings, please include audience participation. There should be a time where people can ask questions or make comments. It's part of the process. And I think a lot of people in Livonia voted no on the bond because they felt left out on the process, and they kept trying to catch up to get the information they needed, and they never got it. So, I'm going to ask again, please, please, include audience participation or a way that people can ask questions and get them answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, council. Imagine, if you will, we were going back at the beginning of the last budget year. Did you guys have...
Can you give your name?
Oh, Jim Bigga, Livonia, Michigan. Did we have $2.5 million or more budgeted for the Better Built Livonia? Because that seems to be about the number that the administration spent this year, at least what we've been able to see in the budget documents. Imagine, if you will, if we had spent that $2.5 million on needs of the city, areas where we have problems, where we have spots in the city where we need to do building maintenance, or if we need to do repairs. Imagine, if you will, if we had that money, instead of walking into this budget year, hearing an administration claim that we're broke, that we don't have the money. Imagine, if you will, if we weren't paying consultants outrageous sums of money. Imagine, if you will, if the City Council knew what the administration was doing, if the administration was upfront and transparent with the City Council. Imagine if the citizens knew what was going on in the upper floors of this building. Imagine if we all knew, and the city was the better for what we were doing. I'll leave you with that.
Thank you. Any other audience communication? Seeing none, I'm going to go to council, and I've asked, I got Council Donovan, then I'll open it up, but if I may start, I kind of want to give a humbling apology, and I guess some more humility. After the last meeting, and I think it was the last meeting, when it was brought up about the free speech and the clapping, as you all know, one of the distinct honors of being the council president is you get this trusty gavel, and you have to review all of these Roberts rules. And listen, if I coordinate that with the last meeting, where I was very narcissistic about a lot of things that I do for a living, it was more frustration, I could tell you that Roberts rules is probably not one of them. I can learn a lot more. You know, I remember right when I got, when I won the election, I said, "This is great, but now I got to learn how to do it." And I literally watched videos of past meetings just to see, because it was important to me. It's important to the city. And so, when I see the comments from some of the members of the community, that's a direct reflection on me. I control the meeting. So if you guys had an issue that I was impacting your free speech, then I apologize, because that's the 1,000%, if anybody knows who I am, that is not who I am. I try to follow the rules, and there are. We have parliamentarians. If you see things, I have whispers in my ear at different times just to stay on course. We have the legalities, and I'm just one of a few in that represent. And I'm doing the best I can, and I think I've done a decent job to keep this group, all the emotions on both sides of the dais, in check. And it's something I'm fairly proud of, and I attribute to all being captains of hockey teams and different things. And sometimes I look at it, and maybe it's payback from all the hard times I used to give the referees. But, we are passionate. So if I personally have infringed on your free speech, I'm publicly here on the record to say I apologize, that is something that I will not stand for. However, I will say that if it is something, I'm just asking people to be people. So if it's something that you want to clap for, go ahead and clap. I don't care. But if it's something that you're doing, in my opinion, and I have free speech, and I can state this, if it's something that you're doing to play games, and sometimes it is very clear that, in my opinion, there might be a little bit of games there, I ask you maybe to show the same respect that I try to show everybody else. That's coming from me, because I'm the one that controls the gavel, and I take it on the chin. There was a lot of social media reports that even traveled Metro Detroit that said that Livonia City Council is suppressing free speech. And I took that on the chin. I promise you, I did. And that's why I'm making the statement now. I know a lot of you, I know all of you. And so, from my vantage point, if that's ever the case, please pull me aside after a meeting. I'm a human being, I live in Burton Hollow, you know, I was a product of this city. I'm just like you guys, you know? I might be here, but I'm serving you. You guys are the people that put me in this office and put me in this spot, and I apologize for that. So, I wanted to say that on record, and listen, if you want to say it, then that's fine. I appreciate it, but we are trying to do the best we can. I could say that for me. The second thing before I hand it over is, I'm taking a different approach. I was very frustrated at that meeting about the pavilion at Rotary. As a Rotarian myself, this is something that I did do. And so instead of coming out and telling you how great I am, because I think I was insecure at that point, I'm going to start doing something about it. And people that are out there that are listening, and I always laugh at millions of people, if you want to reach out to me, reach out, because I think that as a community, we can get this thing done. And I don't have all the answers, but we got a lot of smart people all around us. So, if you want to start looking at it, I'm putting my Habitat for Humanity hat back on, and we're going to raise some money, and we're going to get that thing up. Hopefully, and this is my call, because we do not have anybody from the administration here, we do have people from the administration, but we don't have anybody from the mayor's office. And this is not, before I used to use it as a, you know, hey, let's poke the bear. It's not that. We should have members of the mayor's office here. Period. And so, right now, outside of anything, we're going to get it done. So if you'd like to join, you know, like I've always told all of you guys, we all go on the, you know, we talk to each other online, we battle, and every one of you, I've said that a lot of these candidates that are running, you got to give them a chance. We ain't all perfect. I promise you that. And like I said, I take back some of the things, but being honest, and so, when you look at it, even if you didn't support someone, don't hold them just by one item. Give them at least a chance to call them up and say, "Why did you do that?" You might not like what they say, but you might like it. It might open it up. Honestly, on this journey in the last six months, I've met people that I never met because I was stubborn. I was stubborn, and I think a lot of you guys were stubborn, and we kind of came together, and I don't want to make it a cheesy Rocky speech from Rocky IV. But honestly, we got a great community, it's just, why don't we start coming together? And I don't want to make this into a Rocky speech, so I'm going to move on. I wanted to put it on record, and I appreciate everybody. And then back to kind of the most, the more nomadic notes that I do have here, and thanks to our office administration. Why don't we give her a round of applause? Let's give Sarah a round of applause, because she is awesome, and that is happy, and I'm doing it. There we go. Sarah, take it. We have a public hearing on Monday, September 29th. It's in the auditorium, or no, that's already, no, it is. It's the proposed budget, and we have two PRDA budgets in here, all right? That's all I've got. I'm going to open up to Council Donovan, and then I'll open up to the Vice President after. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mr. President. Council, I'm going to offer a report and recommendation to the Law Department for updating any blight ordinances.
Support, sorry.
Mr. President, I know we heard from a resident saying that some of our ordinance, apparently, what we're hearing third-party is just being conveyed that they're not, they're out of date, and they need to be updated, which is shocking to me, because I think this council has continued to tell the administration, and Mr. Hannah, which is our ordinance department supervisor, which does a great job, works very hard, every time we have an issue, he picks up the phone, and Mr. Hannah and his team, Mr. Strobel, they do a great job. But I can't speak for my colleagues, but I'm fairly certain that all of us, as legislative capacity here, if there's ordinances that are out of date, that are prohibiting our ordinance officers from enforcing blight, people parking their cars in their grass, junk yards in people's front yards, up and down Inkster Road, or anywhere else in the community, I understand people's frustration, and I've seen that myself multiple times. So, I know as one council member that we can change ordinances if there is a need, and I don't know if there is. So we're asking for, I'm asking for a report and recommendation from the administration that if we are prohibiting the ordinance department from doing their job, that we update those ordinances and reflect them to whatever the industry standard is, so that our ordinance officers can go out there and stop these bad actors that are trashing our city and not taking care of their front yards and rear yards, and the people that do take care of the yards, you understand how frustrating it is. So, if I can do anything, I will do my best to help out there. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Oh, yes, yes. Floor's still open on this, because we do have to vote. So, Vice President, then Councilman Toy.
And I'll defer to Mr. Donovan, but I would like to, if you're amenable, add the parking lot situation also to the review and recommendation, if there is something we can do as far as parking lot ordinances.
If, I'm going to keep that separate. It's a much more nuanced topic that deals with more private property, with commercial activity and whatnot, it's a little different. So I'd like to keep this focused on just ordinance violations for blight and those sorts of things in people's residential yards.
So I'll hold that comment then until we come back. All right, thank you.
Councilman Toy.
Hey, thanks. I just want to give a shout out to our city treasurer.
Oh, hang on, no, no. We're still on this motion.
Oh, you're on a motion? Great.
See, guys, listen, thank God I got people around us.
Sorry, I lost track of you guys, sorry.
Do you want to talk on his item?
No, it must have been that anesthetic, I'm sorry.
Listen, all right, so do we have, we do have a motion, just for report and recommendation. Any more council communication? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And that carries seven to zero, and Councilman Donovan still has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, thanks, council. And then also, since our last meeting, 9/11 happened, and I was at Johnson Elementary when 9/11 happened, and I know we didn't talk about it last meeting, it was prior to September 11, so I just wanted to keep that in our minds, and, you know, I think it was 2,900, almost 3,000 Americans died on 9/11. And my brother, 17 years old, wasn't even born when that happened, and he just talks about it with us. So it's kind of interesting to think about, because it was such a big impact on my life, and I know all of us as Americans. And then also, I wanted to read, if you saw the news, we saw the assassination of a political figure. I know Councilwoman Budzinski talked about the state representative, Melissa Hartman, was killed this year for taking votes in Minnesota. Also, a state senator was shot in Minnesota for their votes. And now, we saw the former presidential candidate shot last year, and then this year, a 31-year-old father was shot and killed. So naturally, you know, as someone that's very politically involved, I've been watching it, I imagine a lot of people, whether you're Republican, Democrat, what have you, saw that and saw the stuff that came after that. But I read something today, it was a joint statement against political violence following the assassination of Charlie Kirk from Michigan, young Republicans and the young Democrats of Michigan. And I thought that was interesting, because you're seeing two groups of young people that are calling out this for what it was, and talking about how important it is to condemn the assassination of this individual. So I just wanted to quickly read that, and I was just, it was very touching to me. "The Michigan Young Republicans and Young Democrats of Michigan condemned the assassination of a conservative leader, Charlie Kirk, earlier this month, and all forms of political violence. History shows that when violence is normalized, it leads only to instability and tragedy. Political violence is not strength, it's cowardice. Truth's strength lies in respecting differences and resolving disagreements peacefully. Those of us who value respectful dialogue, decency, and democracy must stand together in rejecting violence and defending our shared values. We also condemned any attempt to celebrate, mock, or justify this heinous act, as well as any calls for violent retaliation. Such reactions are not who we are as Americans. They dishonor the victim, their families. Elected officials and the media must do their part to turn down the temperature of political discord, so this cycle does not continue. We extend our heartfelt condolences to the family, friends, and supporters of Mr. Kirk." So I think as elected officials at the local level, right, we argue, and we fight, and we're very passionate about local issues, but never have I wanted to, you know, hurt one of my colleagues, other than Mr. McCullough on the ice, but that's okay when we're skating on the ice. But outside of that, you know, we have a lot of passionate disagreements with people in the community, and, you know, various vendors and whatnot. So I thought that was nice that the young Republicans, the young Democrats in Michigan came together to talk about this, and hopefully, it's the last we see of it. It is crazy to me, because we've seen the assassination of, you know, Reverend King Jr., JFK, you know, we've seen President Ron Reagan shot, different people from different political aisles. So it's kind of, it was a big deal for me to see that in my lifetime, because I've always heard about it in the past, and seen the state rep killed last year and this year, excuse me. So just wanted to bring that up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. That warrants one, but I'll keep on rolling. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. First of all, the resident that came up and said Election Day was November 5th, it's actually November 4th. So just, I don't want people showing up at the polls on the 5th. Probably a problem. Also, Mr. McCullough mentioned it a little bit, we have our public hearing next Monday here, September 29th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. This is, will be for the city budget and for the PRDA budget. This is where public input is actually encouraged. So hopefully, you'll come out and be ready for that. You'll hear, we were presented with the budget this past week from the administration, and you will hear, you know, us discussing it with the administration as well on that day. And then, I understand Mr. Donavich's position is separating the parking lot, but I would also like to ask for, make a motion to ask for a report and recommendation on the parking lot ordinances.
Support.
Ooh, that's a close one.
Laura can take it.
Please.
And once again, it is commercial, and it is, there is, you know, private ownership there. I just want to make sure that our ordinances are updated.
Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Any more comments from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And motion carries. Floor's yours, if you want.
Good, thank you.
What's that?
Are we back to us, or no?
Yeah. Really fast, Carrie, I'm going to hand it over to you, but before I forget, and our one-of-a-kind, awesome, top-notch city engineer yells at me, because, listen, we have, mark the dates down, obviously, we have every year a Citizens' Road Advisory Committee meeting. It's been scheduled for Thursday, October 9th, 2025, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. This is going to be at the DPW. Again, the city will be posting this, but this is the time, and Todd, please correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the time where you guys get to come in and talk about all things road projects in the future. So it's either speak on October 9th, or hold your peace. It's going to be like a tribunal, but engineering style.
Correct. It's mostly related to the city of Livonia jurisdiction rules, but obviously, Wayne County's been busy on 5 and 7 miles, so we are aware of those other concerns they bring forward that we pass along to Wayne County. And there's an upcoming FAC meeting on November 13th, so we'll be happy to share any comments with those folks that come to this meeting on October 9th. Thank you, President.
Yeah, thank you. And I got to tell you, our city engineer, you guys don't get to see a lot of, a lot of the, he goes, he don't, he does not mess around when it comes to Wayne County or the state. Like, sometimes I'm nervous to even look at him, because some of these emails that come out, he has the best interests of Livonia, and for that, we really appreciate that, and we really appreciate the transparency on this, Todd. So keep up the good work, and, you know, we appreciate you. Councilwoman Budzinski, the floor is yours.
As usual, I'm just going to share some upcoming events coming, happening here in Livonia. This Thursday, it's the Livonia Women's Connection, which is something that I do, you want to talk about? I'll let Laura talk about it.
No, 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 I'm good, because I've got about four things.
Okay. It's Thursday at Garfield Community Schools, they have a new greenhouse. So we will be there from 6 to 8. It's drop-in, it's designed with women in mind, but open to anyone. So please stop by if you want to bring a friend, make new friends, it's a great time to connect and just kind of have in-person, you know, communication and more digital world. Also, this weekend is the Fire Prevention Open House at Fire Station 3 from 10 to 2:00 PM. It's a really amazing event that our fire department puts on. It's great for kids, but it's welcoming for adults, too, if you want to learn about fire safety and the different resources available here in the city. And I will just also note, because it's also happening this weekend, it's the American Civil War Experience at Greenmead. So if you're looking for an excuse and a kind of cool activity to do at Greenmead, it's happening on Saturday and Sunday, I believe. And then finally, the Treat and Meet at Mees Park, which is kind of like a, it's not a trunk or treat, because it takes part along the trail, but it's a candidate meet-and-greet event that I've hosted a couple of times now. It's just a casual opportunity for residents to meet candidates running for local office. All eight city council candidates will be there. They'll have treat stations set up, so you can come and get candy, get literature, ask them questions. It is from 2 to 4 on Sunday, October 5th. So please stop by. Again, it's, you know, kids can wear costumes and get candy, but it's also for adults. So if adults want to come and get candy and meet the candidates, please stop by. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done, that's aw, that was a great event when you did it the last, the last two times. Keep it rolling. All right, anything, oh, Councilman Toy, that wasn't a joke, listen, I'm in.
I feel like a stepchild. I'm teasing. I just wanted to give a shout out to our city treasurer, Bob Nash, who I've known since he was in feety pajamas. Had some surgery today, and we want to wish him well, and of course, Suzie as well. And I also wanted to give out my kindergarten friend, Lorraine Conley, that sits over here and causes trouble, a shout out, because it is her birthday today. So, and she is three months older than I am, so that's good to know. I also wanted to give a sad note, a dear friend of mine, Bruce Patterson, Senator Bruce Patterson, State Representative Bruce Patterson, and County Commissioner Bruce Patterson, has passed away last Monday. Bruce was a well-known character in and around Wayne County. Him and Thad McConter used to cause a lot of discord for Ed McNamara and others down at the county. Good discord, but they were, they were quite a character team together, and Bruce will be sadly missed, because he took that up to the Senate. I remember one day walking in, and there was dead silence in the Senate, and I thought, "What the heck's going on?" Patterson didn't get his way out of vote, so he sided with the Democrats, and everything was splintered all over the place. And it was, it was real interesting, only Bruce could do that. So God bless Bruce and his family. I also wanted to thank all of you that sent me well wishes when I was in the hospital last week. With a couple of procedures, that was a lot of fun. I don't recommend it, but it was a lot of interesting place, and of course, it was done at University of Michigan Hospital. I also wanted to give a shout out on this council presidency stuff, because I've been in that seat a few times, and, you know, in all seriousness, everyone, as you go through this, and all my colleagues mean well, and we all are a little different in our approaches to things, and obviously, our support of different things, but we're all human beings, as our president has said, and we do our best for this city that we can, and we do it in different ways. We are the legislative body, we do the budgets, we are per time, so we don't, all of us, I know, gosh, Martha, I know when you get out of class, you're right on the phone, and I know that Linda, anytime you call her, and Carrie, same way, they're right there. Rob, obviously, Scott, and, no, not you, but, no, I'm teasing. And obviously, our president, who has a lot on his mind and hands. There's legal, there's legal things we have to meet, there's council rules that we have to meet as we conduct meetings, as we conduct ourselves, both personally and professionally. You know, in this day and age, as Rob pointed out, it can be a little scary time being an elected official, even at this level. At state level, I had state police escorts a couple of times for, imagine that, for things I might have said or stood for. So it's not unusual when you're an elected official, so you do your best with that gavel over there, to try and give people every opportunity to speak, and, you know, some people are really funny, so you get up here, and you're, you got to bite the sides of your mouth and lips, because you may or may not agree with them. But I just want to caution you, as we move forward, we're all doing the best we can, we really are, and nobody's better than the other person. We're all elected kind of the same way. So thank you for your endurance on that. And just one last thing, I do want to ask, Mr. President, I had a couple constituents call me, and I'd like a report, and I'm not sure we should send this, on the recycling coach, it's an adaption, and it would cost the city about six or eight grand, and I know we're tight on some dollars, but I also know that there's grants out there through the state of Michigan on recycling, and it's near and dear to my heart, as many of you, that we take a look at these approaches. And it, it comes on your phone evidently, and it's quite, you might know a lot better, more than I do on this, from the constituents that I'm trying to remember, but it was, it was super. And I'd love to see us do something, so I don't know where to send this to.
What about send it to Committee of the Whole?
Committee of the Whole, sure. If everybody wouldn't have a problem with that, that'd be great.
Do we have support?
Make a motion, support.
Yeah.
All right, so you got support.
Thank you.
Any more comments, concerns? For everybody that's out there, we had, if you can recall back, a couple months ago, we had a few of our Girl Scouts in, and they gave us a presentation, and we are hearing that, and it's not being included into next year's budget. That's what I'm hearing, don't quote me on it, but that's why we're going to, that's why we're going to throw it there. We're going to have a conversation.
Mr. Chair, I would have brought it up, but I wasn't able to be at the budget because of the issues last week with the hospital, so.
So we do have the motion.
Thank you, colleagues, for your endurance on that.
Counsel, do you have any comments on this? Audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote to send this component into Committee of the Whole?
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the motion carries. Going back to council, Councilwoman Toy, do you have anything else?
No, that, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem. Anybody else? Okay. With that, I am going to jump right in. We do have reports, we do not have any reports from the mayor, we just have communication from Finance dated September 2nd forwarding the departmental purchases report for the month ending in August 31st, 2025. With that, we're going to move on to consent agenda, and that is going to be voted on items 1 through 5 on the consent agenda. These items were previously discussed, the study meeting that took place on September 8th, and determined to be non-controversial. Counsel?
Show move.
Support.
I got Toy and, was it? Scheel, perfect. Any comments from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Aye. That was cool.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. Consent passes. Oh, wow, that was good.
I've never seen that done before.
I haven't either, I almost wanted to just note that. All right, we're going to move on to unfinished business, this is meetings of the committee, and I know Laura's in the back, if you'd like to come up to speak on it, we're on that item, is Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee of, oh, it's flipped, it's flipped, I'm sorry. So we're going to start with the Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee that took place on July 9th.
Next meeting.
Oh, you're going to do it next meeting, perfect. The subject matter of planning, design, so basically, we're going to move that, we're moving it to the next meeting, so free that up. Now, we're going to move on to item 7, is a Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee meeting of September 15th. The subject matter of Rotary Park Pavilion is CR 259-25. Councilman Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee held a committee meeting Monday, September 15th at 7:00 PM. I, myself, the chair, along with my vice chair, Vice President Martha Tashnik, and our committee member, Councilwoman Budzinski, were there, and other council members present were, was the president, Mr. McCullough, and Councilwoman Scheel. Multiple city officials, including our city attorney, our superintendent Parks and Recreation, members from the Rotary Club, and the architect from HRC, Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark. And this meeting was held in regards to the subject matter of the Rotary Park Pavilion reconstruction. The meeting convened at 7:02 PM. Parks and Recreation Supervisor, Mr. Davis, shared specifics on the project bids. This is just a high-level outline of this meeting. The base bids from HRC Design Architectural Firm, these were the bids that came from the public. So this, HRC is the architect, they designed this pavilion, and then the city puts it on a public website for a public bid, and the bids came in from $829,000 to $1.3 million on, and the low-end bidder was NRC Builders with the lowest qualified bid. The pavilion was of comparable size to the previous Rotary Park Pavilion. This one was ADA compliant with the restrooms. This one was ADA compliant with the restrooms. HRC and Parks and Rec were just designing and replacing what was originally already there, similar size, similar project. There were some updates with material, brick and hardy board, some masonry, the roof being a metal roof, but it was still the same size, roughly same idea, concept there. Parks and Rec did their due diligence, and spoke to the communities and people in the industry, asking for comparable prices and what other communities are seeing when it comes to these sorts of pavilions. The council asked about things, how we could cut back and scale back the pavilion. Value engineer, for example, the city could save roughly $100,000 if we removed the fireplace. So, a question I had at one point was why do we have an outdoor fireplace at the pavilion? But again, the Parks and Recreation was replacing what was there before. So, but we could save roughly $100,000 if we removed the fireplace. And that fireplace was used by people that would rent out the pavilion, so there are people that are passionate about keeping that fireplace. Parks and Rec has sent the city council multiple examples of pre-cast and prefab restroom options. Those options have roughly a 10-month lead time from the day the city actually orders, though, so there's a lot of discussion around what is, if we can't do the pavilion with the built restrooms out of masonry or lumber, could we order these prefab, pre-cast restroom options? So, we discussed a lot about that. Bids were on the public bidding platform for roughly four weeks, so again, when the city goes out for a bid, they have to bid out on a public bidding website. There's a few of them out there. Sometimes, you're able to waive the bidding process. The council does that regularly for items that are very specific to a certain industry or company we've been working with for a long time, that gives us really good pricing and/or is just very specific to that item, so that does come up. But this naturally was something that would be bid out there, and there was nine bidders that bid on it over roughly four weeks. HRC discussed why the building was designed this way, and why their construction recommendations were what they were. Due to high-use area, there is need to make sure the structure is durable and long-lasting, and this is also a signature park. Restrooms are of most importance to the council. Some of the discussion were around double-unit pre-cast restrooms. Those are roughly $225,000 plus site work, the crane, and some other costs that roughly will take, cost $300,000 for the pre-cast restroom, and that lead time, there was discussion from 10 months to 16 weeks, and again, you have to go through the whole council procurement process, then the construction seasons. So, no work would be completed this year, whether the city starts building a pavilion right now, or if we go out for a pre-cast prefab option. There was discussion around the insurance. Insurance replacement cost was a fundamental disagreement with our insurer. The bond debt service expiring will now be used for future Sheldon Park bonds. There was conversation about the expiring bond in the Parks and Rec, and what could we use those dollars for, and those dollars will be used for the Sheldon Park Bond, which Sheldon Park will be having a big update over in the southeast corner of town. And again, the insurance, the city received roughly $250,000 or so in replacement costs from our insurance provider, and that, of course, was a big back-and-forth discussion between the city and that provider. The council president asked to build a structure out of more traditional two-by-four stick-built as opposed to masonry structure, so we had that conversation about what the pros and cons would be from a traditional wood-built structure compared to a masonry structure. There was some discussion about where the funds were coming from, when the council says or when the department heads says from budgeted funds. They can come from budgeted funds, and they can move around budgeted funds. That doesn't mean the council has to approve that. So, the department heads of the administration can figure out where money can come from, but they can take it from other projects and relocate that money to a specific project, specific item, but ultimately, it's the council's authority whether we approve that expenditure and how those dollars are moved around. Funds were coming out of multiple funds throughout the city's budget, cutting other projects, and the remaining fund balance would be coming from the 418 fund balance. So, the 418, that budget, that fund has seven or eight million dollars in it maybe, and those dollars are meant for capital improvement projects, and if you watch council meetings, you know, there's some expensive items, so that would be a discussion amongst the council if they would want to spend 418 fund balance on priority projects on a pavilion, so to speak. So, that was something that kind of came up between council. Council president asked to redefine the overall scope of the project. There was discussion around the long-term performance, and can it be affected by a wood structure? The building must be compliant with commercial building codes per the architect, and the council president asked the administration for recommendation to re-scope, full-rebid the project that will comply with code requirements. Ron and Nancy from the Rotary Club have been working on raising private funds, and this is really amazing work. They've raised roughly $50,000. They have $50,000 in committed funds as of this meeting, and the next day, September 16th, they're picking up an additional contribution of $25,000. So, as of that meeting, there was a potential for roughly $75,000 in private donations, and there is a 25, an additional $25,000 pledge from the Rotary AM Club if the city builds more than just restrooms. So, it is important to the Rotary AM Club that the city council and the city does not just build restrooms, but they build a pavilion and restroom. So, there's roughly $100,000 in potential committed funds from the private community. So, that was pretty amazing that the Rotary Clubs did that. So, Nancy from AM Rotary, she has a lot of experience in parks, working for Wayne County. She talked about multiple things, talking about low maintenance, durable, and long-lasting. That was very important. The design fees came up roughly $32,000 in architectural fees, and again, the council president asked to redefine value engineer down the overall scope of the project and look for alternative building methods, investigate multiple options, and come back to the city council. That meeting adjourned at 9:04 PM. This item remains in committee, and the recommendation from the committee to the administration was to re-scope, full-rebid the project that will still comply with code requirements. And again, this item will stay in committee. Mr. President, a few remarks.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, as committee chair, you know, this is very important to the Capitol Outlay Committee infrastructure. It's very important to council. I think I've spoken to every council member about this. Naturally, I was sticker shocked when I heard $800,000 for a pavilion and restrooms, and I don't want to talk down the overall scope of this. I mean, it's a very nice pavilion, and it's got restrooms, a mechanic room, and unfortunately, just the way things are, materials are expensive, and trades are expensive. You gotta pay people. People want to get paid, I understand that. So, naturally, contractors with the cost of insurance and all the other things that are getting more and more expensive for businesses to operate. While I was shocked personally, $800,000, you start looking at some numbers, I start talking to some people in other communities, and everyone's like, yeah, that sounds about the going rate. So, it's a very difficult decision for me personally. I can't, as one council member, take money out of the 418 fund when our buildings are falling apart. It's like me, I want that new garage at my house, but I have to replace my floors because my crawl space floor is starting to sink. So, I have to prioritize, just like anyone's budget. So, I think that we have to prioritize more pressing needs as opposed to spending hundreds of thousands of dollars out of the 418 fund for a pavilion. So, I think the conversations about just doing a restroom were very important, but I'm hoping not. I'm hoping that the administration come back and look for some cost-saving measures. But then you ask yourself, are we building a subpar project? You know, I want some that's long-lasting. These pavilions will see thousands of people that go through them every single year. It's not your traditional residential home, so you talk about thousands of people going through these pavilions, and they get beat up, and the question I had was, is a wood structure gonna be durable, and are we gonna save a lot of money? So, I think the HRC architectural team and the Parks and Recreation Department are working really hard. There was a lot of great discussion among council, back and forth, and I'm happy the committee structure works well like that, so we can interact back and forth, administration come up with some different ideas. So, it sounds like they're gonna come back to us at some point with some recommendations and see if they can cut some money, but I really love to see the fireplace stay. I know it's important to a lot of residents, but the city only has so much money of taxpayer dollars to spend on these projects, so I look forward to it. So, thanks, Mr. President. Thank you to all the colleagues for attending the meeting, and thanks to the administration and the city attorney for going back and forth on the deliberation. Thank you, sir.
Great report out. Counsel? I'll open them. Yes?
Yes, I just wanted to add, for the Rotary, I know they're so passionate and working on this a lot. They came to my coffee hour this weekend to just reaffirm their commitment to fundraising for this project. Their goal is to raise at least $300,000, and as noted, they have about $100,000 so far. So, just wanted to, again, recognize them for their effort. You know, they are actively communicating with council and the administration on this, and we are grateful, because you know that that money does make a significant impact in how we're able to move forward with this project. So, just wanted to recognize the Rotary and provide that community update of what their total goal is for the project, so that as we're looking at these numbers, we can kind of think if the Rotary is able to provide that $300,000, and we've got $260,000 from the insurance, we're looking at 560 there. So, just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Anything else from counsel? Anything from the audience? All right, so, name, kind of where you're at? Two minutes.
Denise Micah-Lavonia. Speaking of shocking things happening at that meeting, I was totally shocked that we sat there for two hours, and again, we were disregarded, that we weren't even mentioned in the summary of the meeting how many citizens were in attendance. And I know some of the people are here that will speak on it. We had people from the trades there, and we were told, if you want to talk to us, come up after the meeting. It might have been good for the Rotary people to hear from that, what was, what they said. And where's the open communication? Again, the citizens are ignored. We sat there quietly for two hours, listening, and we're trying to hope, and I personally have donated to the Rotary Park, my husband and I, we went to the fundraiser at Spree because we're passionate about Rotary Park, too, and it's just very disappointing that people were not acknowledged there, and that's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Jenny O'Connor, Lavonia resident and city council candidate. I'm here because I, too, want to express my concern. I do understand that there are certain meetings where public comment maybe isn't appropriate, but in this particular meeting for the Rotary Pavilion, there were several skilled union tradespeople in attendance who were ready and willing to volunteer their labor and expertise to help preserve this space for the community at no cost to the city. So, these gentlemen were there waiting so that they could offer up their input as experts in their fields, and unfortunately, without public comment, that opportunity for collaboration was not heard. I strongly believe that by taking a creative and collaborative approach and bringing together the city volunteers and skilled tradespeople, that we could potentially replace exactly what was there, restoring the pavilion to its original quality while saving some taxpayer dollars. This isn't just about cost savings, which of course, we know is important, but it's also about valuing the skills of our local union tradespeople and working together to preserve a cherished public space. I urge council to continue holding further discussions, incorporate, so that we can begin to continue in incorporating public input on this project, so that we can explore more collaborative solutions. I do think that with the right approach, I'm confident we can save this pavilion in its one-for-one state as to what was lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Crystal Moore, 9063 Beatrice. I was one of the skilled tradespeople that was in attendance. I had reached out to my community service committee when I learned of the price tag and what was going on with Rotary Park, and had asked them if this was something that we would be interested in contributing to. At that time, I was asked to bring my business rep, who I talked to about reaching out to the other skilled trades, since they have all the connections, and we did manage to bring a business rep from Local 98, Plumber's Local, and we were there under the, well, I was there under the invitation of Ted Davis to speak, and it was unfortunate to not get a chance. At any rate, going outside of that, I think that we need to look outside the box a little bit, right? The restructuring, as President McCullough had suggested, in looking at that avenue is one way, but labor, like Mr. Donovan said, is expensive, and there are trades willing to donate, right? I also think that a lot of businesses make money within our community. There's no reason that we shouldn't be afraid to ask them what they might be willing to do, right? We have builders all over. I had mentioned on Facebook, Showstack, right? I know they've made a lot of money in the community. Why can't you approach them, right? They could have designed for free, right? That's one of those things that, like, if you care about the community you're in, you're going to donate, right? So, I think that we're stuck in the tradition of we just send it out to bid, right? That's great, but this is a public space that the community can come together, right? That's, when I reached out to my community service program, that's what I was envisioning, right? Is that something that we can bring the community back together, right? We do this as a whole. It's, oh, that's good. That is probably about two minutes. That's okay.
No, no, counsel, would it be possible to give him another two minutes?
Oh.
Would that be okay, since he didn't? I would, I'm asking you to use the motions. Yep.
I'll make a motion for an additional two minutes.
Support.
Can I safely show seven? Just call a voice.
Okay.
See, I'm not good at this. Aye? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good to go.
I appreciate that.
Motion basis.
So, yeah, I just, my thought was that we need to be looking at more avenues, right? And before, I mean, I know that you guys have sent this back to the administration to look, but before you go committing funds, right? And I know that you have to have licensed contractors, but that's, our community service has licensed contractors, right? That's how this works. So, we should be, we should be looking at all the avenues, right? It was also mentioned that we have a skilled trades program school, right? That pavilion, great project, because those skilled trade schools build houses, right? Maybe Lavonia's doesn't, but I know that they do, right? So, there's no reason that we can't find creative ways to bring the community together at a more sticker-friendly option, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Eileen McDonald, Lavonia, Michigan. To everyone's thought process on this, you know, I'm one who's probably pretty conservative when it comes to spending money, but I think on this one, maybe we should maybe take a step back, let, see what community members can do, the Rotary. You know, Parks and Rec committed $100,000. There was also another $100,000 that was supposed to be utilized from the general fund. So, if you put a pause, it's on the agenda. If you put a pause on the fireplace, took that out of the project, you're looking at $289,000, which really, if we can get some concessions from the trades, if we can get money from the Rotary, we're not that far off. And I think it's something that really the community would enjoy. I mean, everybody enjoyed that pavilion, and I think it's worth a shot just to wait and see what's what, because you're gonna spend, what, another $32,000 for generating drawings and such, and going through all that bid process again? You know, just see what we can do. Give us a month, right? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Steve King, Coventry Gardens. Yeah, months ago, I brought this up, the modular proposal to the restrooms first, and I brought this proposal forward. Urban Blue Restrooms, 180. Roof Pavilion, 300,000. And I got quotes on all this stuff, actual, you know, papers with numbers on it. Masonry Fireplace, $30,000. That's not a lot of money, but you could do a masonry fireplace for $30,000. Solar Panels, $40,000. $550 for the whole nine yards. So, if you just go online, talk to any Amish company in Michigan, they have the Grand Teton Pavilion Kit. Now, they precut this, it's all prefab, it's beautiful structure, timber frame. You gotta assemble it, but it's $119,967, and we'll have an old-fashioned barn raising right there at Rotary Park. As far as the Urban Blue, I know Ted's on board with that now. So, this year in Ohio, they put in an Urban Blue Smart Restroom. I would love to beat Ohio to the punch. Dial Park, it's in Tamalane, Franklin, Ohio. I have the directions. If you want to go on a road trip, I'll drive, we'll go down there, you'll see the most beautiful bathroom you've ever seen, and then, maybe, maybe then you'll trust me and all these other people that are coming forward with all of these great ideas when you touch it and see it and maybe use it. And then we can have the Urban Blue Bathroom. If you had listened to me six months ago, we'd all be using it right now. This whole thing, I feel your frustration, Brandon. I went to that meeting, you talked around the issue for two hours. Come on, I feel your pain. And so, hopefully, things are gonna change soon. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience communication? See, now you got the right time here.
Everybody said what I wanted to say, so there you go. Just a reminder of what I said earlier.
Wait, what's your name?
Laura Janica.
Oh, thank you.
Monger Street.
All right, appreciate it.
Okay. Again, it was on the agenda a month ago. A word of bid, Department of Parks and Recreation regarding Rotary Park Pavilion Reconstruction from budgeted funds. So, from that, I'm assuming Mr. Davis came in thinking he had that money available. Is my logic not correct? Can shake your head, it's fine. Nobody wants to shake their head? Okay, thank you. So, we were told we couldn't talk that day, and we've, you know, Denise and many have mentioned that, but this happens a lot. This, you know, we put it in committee, then we can't talk about it. Citizens don't have a time to talk about things. That's kind of what we're waving the red flag for. So, the other thing I did want to mention, Mr. Donovan brought up about Sheldon Park To me, that, again, that's the same kind of a similar problem, that citizens haven't had input into that. I haven't seen a meeting that talked about what we're doing at Sheldon Park. We've been talked at, but we don't get to really come together, and I think that's the missing link here. You know, we don't have to make all of the judgments and all of the, but we want to have some input and to be heard, and a lot of people do want a pool at Sheldon. They don't want just a splash pad. And another thing that I do is I look at a lot of other city councils and what they do. I looked at Dearborn just a little while ago online, and they actually talk, they talk, and the mayor talks to them, so.
Appreciate it. All right. Any other comments on this item? Seeing none, I am going to move into unfinished business. It's item 8 is a roll call. It's a proposed amendment to Lavonia Court of Ordinances as amended, comes to us from the Department of Law. This is in reference to amend section 075, 80, and 115 of Title II, which is Administration. It's chapter four. First reading was given by Council Vice President Martha Tashnik on September 8th, 2025. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance change was proposed to streamline council operations and increase efficiency, so I'm going to offer a motion to approve.
Awesome. We did a second read as well.
Oh, second read, sorry. Second read and then motion to approve.
There we go. Any comments, questions from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Vice President Taschek.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shiel.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And item eight carries seven to zero. We're going to move into new business. Item number nine is a request to schedule a closed committee of a whole meeting. This comes to us from the Department of Law in reference to the purpose of discussing pending litigation and interning client privilege communication with respect to the Belmont Properties LLC versus the City of Livonia. It's USDC case number two something twenty-five, CV one-one-seven-two-zero. Mr. President? Yes. Offering approving.
Support.
Any other comments from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Vice President Taschek.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shiel.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And item nine carries seven to zero. We're going to move on to item ten, is a request to amend council resolution three fifteen dash two-four. This comes from me, in order to clarify that council member hosted community outreach events that are not campaign advocacy events are not subject to fees that would normally be charged for the rental of city-owned properties. Before, I I would need just a motion, just for sake of discussion.
Support.
Okay, so.
Someone's going to make the motion.
I'll put forward an approving motion.
Okay.
I thought that was a motion.
And you're good for the support?
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to probably pass the gavel to Council Vice President, just to give you some context and, yeah, well, should I pass it now or do you give it? Let's pass it, right?
Okay.
Okay. Vice President, may I have the floor?
You may.
Okay, so this is an intriguing one, and I appreciate, I'm not going to belabor it too long, but right now, we have a fee schedule, and so if there are events by council members, right now, the way it stands is, in my opinion, it's somewhat of a gray area because what constitutes, under the fees matrix schedule that's currently there, department heads obviously get waived. Right now, I know the chamber, I think, is waived, and right now, I think it's open for interpretation on council. Now, this is kind of an intriguing point because, for me, like, I do a pizza event with the seniors usually every other month, and it's at the senior center, and it is nonpolitical. I I can promise you that, and that's coming from my, someone could read it differently, but I can give you a perfect example that one time I had a couple candidates that were running, and never once did I bring that up and say this is. And right now, under the current fee schedule, the council member would get charged. And I'm not saying this is more of probably needing to be talked about further, but at least addressing it to do the right thing should be taken into consideration, because for me, is if I was going to have to pay the room rental fee, I could come in there and make it purple and do all the cool stuff and give you my honest opinion, but as servants to the community, I feel that if a council member or another elected official is doing the duty of the position, I, for one, thinks that it should be waived. Now, any contents, whether it's pizza, whether it's coffee, that should be paid for by said council member or elected official. I'm just kind of spinning. I'm not saying that this is everything, we probably should look at in detail, but this is where it comes, is what is ethical, what is not, because I could look at it and say, if that's the course we're going down, well, then maybe Ted Talks by Ted Davis should be charged. Maybe the chamber should have to pay for a lot of these events. The state of the city, we, as a city, every ticket, we have to pay the chamber. It's kind of weird, and it's at a different place. So I think this needs to be talked about further, and with that, if you'd like to pass the gavel, or if anybody would like to make a motion, oh, no. Can I, can I, Carter, can I make a motion?
You can make a motion.
You can.
Can I make a motion? Now, I'm going to make a substitute motion.
Make a motion.
Yes, I'm going to make a substitute motion to place this subject matter into the Law and Education Committee.
Support.
Thank you.
So we have a motion for Mr. McCullough, support by Shiel, to place this. And we have to vote to substitute, yes.
So we could sit here and talk about it, but the rest of it, I think we should talk about it more in detail and have more of an intimate conversation.
We need to vote to substitute before we can expound.
Yep, all good.
Madam Clerk, will you take the, well, sorry. Is there anyone from the audience that has comments on the substitute motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you can take the vote to substitute.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shiel.
Aye.
Vice President Taschek.
Aye, motion passes seven, nothing. Would you like this chair, would you like the floor back?
No, now I'm.
You got to actually make the motion.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to send the subject matter of item ten into the Law and Education Commission Committee.
Support.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. McCullough to send it to Law and Education, supported by Mr. Donavich.
Same stuff, so I could sit here and grandstand on it, but let's go talk about it at a meeting.
Mr. Donavich.
Thanks, Madam Vice President. I agree with Mr. McCullough. I've been on council for a number of years now, and when you want to host a educational or informational event as a council member, just like as a department head, you want to speak to the residents, you should be allowed to do so, and it can become cost prohibitive if you hold multiple events in a year, and you're, we don't get paid a lot as council members, so, and you end up donating a lot of your money away anyways to, you know, this golf sign and this donation event and whatnot, so if we have to also now start paying to host events that are educational, nonpolitical, non-campaign-related, I think it just starts to stop council members from engaging in the community. With that being said, I know there's more to it, and I know there's, there are, there are going to absolutely be political candidates and or elected officials that that take advantage of this and and do things. Like, for example, I was supportive of the millage, and I wanted to do something educational for the millage, but I thought there was a fine line there, so I paid for that because I was advocating, in a way, on behalf of a millage while I was educating the community and informing them, answering questions for a few hours. I still thought it was the best judgment as a council member to pay for that. But if you are doing, I don't know, monthly events where you're updating the community on what has happened at the last few council events, council meetings, and maybe you can't attend those council meetings, or committee meetings, or you didn't get enough one-on-one conversation, one-on-one FaceTime with someone, you have that opportunity. And again, if you do that once a month or or once a quarter, you know, four or five hundred bucks can start to add up. So I just think there needs to be a fine line here, and unfortunately, there are elected, just the one percent that make it harder for everybody else, right? So someone's going to take advantage of it, so that's why we need rules, and I'm looking forward to, if this motion passes, what can come out of Law and Education, and we're just adding more work on top of our already overtasked law department. So thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, Councilmember Budzinski.
Yeah, I won't belabor this, since it is going to committee most likely. I just do want to state that I think it's really important that, you know, elected officials are accessible and that public space is available to meet with the public, to hear thoughts and ideas and share information. So I I think we do need to relook at this fee structure and how it's implemented. I think elected officials are elected in their own right to serve as they see fit. That's what voters have an opportunity to decide, who do they want to represent them, and then hold those individuals accountable through elections. So, you know, just in terms of what rules we have set up so that those people can engage with the residents and voters, I I think we should limit barriers so that it's easier for people to make the choice to do these kind of things, and that's what I'll talk about more at the committee meeting, but as people can probably guess, this is something that impacts me directly, since I do host monthly coffee hours. And so, again, I look forward to talking about this more in a committee.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yeah, I I think it's a good idea to have a discussion on this. I do feel that it's slightly slanted, though, and it it will get muddy the waters if council members are able to get these spaces for free when the citizens have to pay, and there's a fine line between campaigning and giving information. So that needs to be considered when we have this discussion, and I I'm looking forward to it, but I just need all the rest of the council members to understand that, you know, when campaign seasons come up and things like that, it it does muddy the waters on who's going to pay for what and so on and so forth, and where does that money come from? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you. I remember when we did this grit sometime back.
August the twenty-fourth.
It was, yeah, it was really interesting, and even before that, Mr. Feenstra was real active at this. Yeah, because I think he abused some of it, quite frankly, and not as an elected official, but just for other groups. I wasn't, no, I I didn't mean that he abused it. I'm not only concerned about the council in this grit, I'm concerned about some of these other city entities that claim they're a city entity and are making money off of the city for it, and yet they get things free. So I won't go into names, but I could see one glaring one. So I'll be interested to see what we do, and I know our law department already gave us some information on this. Appreciate that, Carter. And I can see that Carter may be a little bit more busy or his department, because it is a fine line, you know, when you get into, especially campaign season, we all want to win, because we don't run to lose, so, you know, and not that that's going to make a big difference. I've always said candidates' nights don't make a difference in the election, but, you know, we can have that debate some other time. But in in all honesty, I think that, you know, we've got to, we've got to put some kind of law down on it. I get it, but I also think that council people, as elected officials, my goodness, not that the water should be expanded, but we should be able, I know that Carrie does her coffees, and I mean, she does a great job. She brings in the department heads to educate people, she's brought in the mayor, if I remember. I've never been to one, but I've heard good things about them, and I'm not just citing her, some of us have done other things in our community, so we need to be community visible. Just how that lies will be an interesting topic for that committee that I believe Martha chairs then, right? No, you don't. Oh, Linda does, all righty. Who's your vice chair on that, do you know? Offhand?
You are.
Oh, look. There we go. There we go.
I'm not clapping, I'm doing, I'm giving her that jazz hands.
We haven't had a beating, because Linda kind of pointed early here, or not, not, not within that timeframe, so it'll be an interesting, all right, I will shut up now.
I wasn't sure if I needed to gavel you.
Yeah, or throw it, either way, I don't know.
Just a reminder, the motion on the floor is not about the issue, it's to send the, send it to committee. So does anyone else have comments on sending it to committee? Anyone from the audience? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please get us out of this.[1742.15]